Good evening all, we're going to open our work session at four thirty P M. And we're now gonna go into executive session at four thirty P M.
You have full, full retire.
Alright, we are gonna go ahead and get started, we're missing a couple, but they'll be here momentarily, so we're gonna reopen our work session at six fifteen P M. And with that, we will start with discussing agenda items, City Manager.
Mayor, thank you, so moving right to consent agenda, four A is in a minute, so I'll move on to four B. I'll read it as it was written, it says, consider a resolution authorizing, what it really is, is providing direction to the city attorney to prepare and ordinance updates special use permit requirements related to parking vehicle deliveries. Based on our last conversation, our briefing that we had at the last meeting, and as we were looking now, city attorneys in at the moment, but there's a couple of different sections of code that they'll have to reference. We're talking about the city attorney, section four oh four, section six oh five, so there is no resolution attached, but basically what we're looking for is that it's the consensus of the council to provide direction to the city attorney to prepare and ordinance and update special use permits required related to parking vehicles and deliveries.
And then it'll come back to us for review?
Yeah, it'll, it'll come through, anything that changes the S U P, we'll have to go back through P and Z, go back and come back to the council. If we, maybe some ordinances regarding parking of commercial motor vehicles, those come directly to you.
Four C, consider resolution, the city council, the city of Duncanville, authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Edward Kern Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program, JAG, to be administered by the city of Dallas in the amount of six thousand five hundred thirty seven dollars ninety nine cents. Utilized to purchase three storage boxes to be installed in the rear of the department's patrol vehicles, chief stockman is here to help answer any questions.
That's an annual grant, maybe done for.
What, what, I'm just curious, what are the storage boxes for?
So it contains emergency flares, emergency equipment, it also houses our radio equipment and all of our electronics in.
Otherwise, they're just rolling around?
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, that's complete the consent agenda. I wasn't ready for that. Hang on now, okay, so we're gonna jump into the city council calendar, city secretary.
Thank you, Mayor, on April fifth is the don't, don't mess with Texas trash out, trash off, and movies in the park. On April the seventh is the bond, the bond committee meeting, that's at six thirty here in the briefing room. And on the eleventh, we have the Duncanville PD Water Lantern Ceremony at Lakeside Park. And the Extravaganza at Armstrong Park is on April the twelfth. We also have a bond committee, the second one for April is on April the seventeenth, with the holiday on Good Friday. And also the senior Easter egg hunt, and also on the eighteenth. And first day of early voting is April the twenty second. Coffee with the mayor is on April the twenty fourth.
Thank you.
Thank you. April twenty sixth is concert, concert in the park, and that's at Armstrong Park. And then we have on April the twenty ninth is the preliminary budget workshop, and the last day of early voting as well.
Question?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Tyler, for the don't mess with Texas trash off, what chemicals are you accepting, are you accepting light bulbs with fluorescent light bulbs, what are you accepting or do you not accept?
I think that is the Operation Clean Duncanville, the don't mess with Texas trash off is a K D V event, that we're doing cleanups in multiple parks. I don't actually know the specifics of Operation Clean Duncanville, but I can give them to you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and Ms. Gooden is, just make a point, it doesn't mean you can take those light bulbs and dump them in the park.
And you were reading my mind, I know how to get rid of them. And at six thirty on the twenty ninth is the Lab Fest at the senior center.
City, city manager have a little conflict there?
Yes.
Is there other considerations? We, we do, we, that's one of the things we need to discuss with you. I know that we had some out pretty early, the workshop, but then Lab Fest got scheduled too, so I don't know if there would be any interest in doing preliminary budget workshop before the Lab Fest and still leave it on the fifth Tuesday, or if you'd rather just reschedule, whatever direction the council would like to go.
Remind me again, I'm not on the calendar.
That's okay, it's April twenty ninth, it's the fifth Tuesday, so.
What time?
So Lab Fest is scheduled for six thirty, I believe. At the senior center.
So what, what would be a solution, Mr. Matt Burnett, what do you think?
Well, potential, we can leave the preliminary budget workshop a day earlier.
A day earlier or, like, earlier in the day?
Yes.
Much pleasure, council? Okay, yes, either, I'm not getting any more.
I would like, I would like Monday or even the week prior.
So, are we considering Monday?
Monday? I'm okay on that day.
I'm good with what, for your decision.
Karen's checking on hers. Callum, your idea, so I assume you're still okay with it. Okay, and Joe just gave you the thumbs up.
Okay.
Monday? Yeah, time again?
Sixty?
Sorry, six.
Six, if that works for her.
Six. Alright, good deal, thank you.
Yes, that's all I asked, thank you, Mayor.
Next item, I have three briefing presentations. First one is Parks and Recreation Management Software, Tyler Agee, Assistant Director of Parks and Rec.
Good afternoon, council.
Mayor, council.
Thank you, sir. So I'm coming for you today to just give you a briefing, preliminary briefing on a new recreation management software we're planning on implementing. Just some background on that whole project, why we plan on implementing, timeline, costs, things of that nature, so. So, some background behind this project, so the city of Duncanville has long prioritized high quality recreational services, to maintain this standard and meet growing community expectations and trends, we need to enhance our technology systems. This shift is about streamlining operations, improving financial oversight, and creating better experiences for our staff and customers. Some of the current challenges we're experiencing, experiencing is a current lack of an online presence for our rec management software, so programs, facility rentals, tournaments, pretty much everything that we do rec center wise. You have to call in and speak to a person, or you have to come up and physically be there to, to book or know about them, so. And then the manual backend financial and accounting input, that's long been an issue for us, a lot of human input of financials and running reports, and making sure things are cooperating and things like that, so. So after a thorough evaluation process, we demoed quite a few different rec management softwares, and eventually landed on Explore Recreation. They emerged as the best value for the city, ideally they're an API based cloud, or API cloud based software. Seamless Munis integration was one of the criteria that we made with them. The online application is included, so it's not separate, not paying additional fee for that. And then separate financial and accounting for the recreation center and the field house operation, so this will be kind of a joint venture between the rec center and the field house, but the accounting will be separate, which is something we haven't had in the past. Some of the benefits of these offerings is cloud based platform, minimizes the burden of depending on the city's I T department, so ideally with our current system, I T has to stay on top of updates, server backup, things of that nature, if it goes down, they have to communicate with the, the. With the software manufacturer to get updates put in, and that didn't always work seamlessly with their scheduling, the softwares, and additionally, some of those things cost. With this system, everything is seamless, it's all paid for, it's all inclusive. Self-service features, so right now the rec center does not have any self-service features for the public, so again, they don't, they can't go in online or see what's available, what fields, what pavilions, they have to call in or go up there to see physically the paper trail. And then seamless integration with Tyler Munis, so our financial system with the city, the new city calendar, it seamlessly integrates with that, so when people go to the calendar, they can book something, and it'll automatically talk to one another, so we don't have to pull the report from the calendar, or pull the report from rec track, and then consolidate internally. It'll automatically talk to each other, so you can see how many available tickets are for this event, or, you know, they'll, they'll communicate with one another. It also has Esri R G I S implementation, so we can pull, when we do the resident, non-resident rates, once somebody creates an account, it'll pull their address from the city, make sure they're in the city, so they'll get that resident rate, non-resident rate, depending on where they live within the city limits, yes, sir?
Seamless integration.
Yes, sir.
What's that, what's that look like?
What does the seamless integration look like, so we did test this, we have a couple of different other cities that utilize Munis software and the Explore software. What it, what it means to us is, we don't have to manually track and report or report daily cash transactions, reports, our financial systems will basically talk to each other automatically, so they'll pull the correct numbers in the right G I S.
Works with all these other systems, you've already tested that.
Yes, sir, so they're currently working with a, another city in Canada on the city calendar, which was kind of a, a new thing that we started on, but I, we did background and check that their implementation would be with, is currently working, so they're working with that now. Tyler Munis is something they've done in a couple of different cities, I think three or four, we've backgrounded, background checked, then we have our financial team checking into the other cities, as well as working with Explore. The Esri and R G I S is a simple implementation, they just pull the, the G I S software that we have on file, and it enters into the software as well, so. That's one of the benefits of it being API, meaning it can kind of talk to just about anything that is computer based.
Ms. Gooden, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Modules, how many modules are this one complete system that will communicate with all those others, or do you need different modules of it in order for it to?
Everything is all inclusive in the yearly subscription that we pay for, so ideally I'll get to the financials on the next slide, but it's one module, and the accounting aspect is kind of two, so it'd be rec center, rec, rec center financial, then the field house financials.
And our I T department gave a thumbs up?
Yes, sir.
I'm hearing that they're, they're kind of.
Yes, sir. We have, we have embedded with finance, I T, everybody that we need to, to be involved with this implementation, so.
Question? Did you have the presentation on the M I G O F last week, is this something that is gonna interact with that as well, or?
So we haven't spoken with my governments online yet on their API software, but if they are an API based software, then it will integrate.
They are?
If, if, they are. That was one of the things I needed to do, so perfect. So the financial overview, overview of what we'll be coming at a later council agenda is kind of a five year agreement, totally eighty four thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. Base service and integration is seventy three thousand two hundred, so that is over a five year period, split between the rec center and the field house, and then a contingency, just in case the software goes up, or we need additional training or something comes up. That fifteen percent contingency covers a ten thousand nine hundred and eighty dollar breakdown. So the contract breakdown is this year, we'll be doing thirteen two hundred, and FY twenty, twenty five for the implementation, so we'll do a, a implementation process to get everything running, get all the kinks out before the end of the FY twenty five budget year. And then FY twenty six through thirty is kind of that five year agreement for six thousand, or for twelve thousand dollars a year. And the cost will be shared between the field house and the rec center, yes, sir?
That's my question, so what, what's, what's the breakdown of how they're gonna split that cost up between the field house?
Six thousand and six thousand, each, each department will contribute. So it's twelve thousand a year total, and then rec center will pay six thousand, field house will pay six thousand.
And I'll make a note, it does replace what we currently have, so it's really just replacing one software with the other, so it's not an addition.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that, because that's.
We pay what we pay bills now.
Yeah.
Four thousand dollar increase for all those additional functions.
So, just in closing, just a better experience for everybody, that's what we're shooting for with this new software, modern user, user experience, mobile friendly applications, so it doesn't come with an actual app, like a mobile app, but it does integrate with your online presence, so if you go online to Google, it'll automatically adjust to your phone, so that's what the mobile friendly access means. Streamline staff, workflows and operations, improved communication between all departments and the customer, and then fewer errors and faster service for the city of Duncanville residents.
I have a comment, not a question, so we have Munis, Intergo, M I G O, Explore.
Yes, ma'am.
Ton of systems.
So we, again, this is replacing our current recreation management software, so it's not an additional software, it's a replacement for something that will work a little bit better with those systems.
I think one of the things you told me was that the current software does not integrate, it's a manual process.
Correct. Yes, sir, thank you.
Is that, is that a subscription, the current software we're using now, is that?
It is an annual subscription, which is why we're trying to implement this year, so we can cut off services by the end of fiscal year, and start with the new one, so we're not double paying for softwares.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, no problem.
Alright, next up is three C, I'm sorry, three B, and unusual to see Ms. Otis early in the evening. I think she'll get to go home early, hopefully.
That should be long while you are still awake. The purpose of me actually having this briefing now, instead of at the end of the meeting, is we really just wanted to check in with all of you about the monthly financial reports in general, so. The information that's flowing, if you have any input, if you want to back off the frequency, we've been faithfully, you know, presenting these every month for the last fifteen, eighteen months now, so we just really want to give you an opportunity to have discussion before going to the report itself to offer any feedback and changes you maybe would like to see at this point, so I'm just kind of putting it out there for you all to. Let us know what you might like to see do different, if you want to see something.
So if I could just, so when we were redoing the work plan, right, we talked about, I did two deliverables, one the end of March, and I think the other was the end of September, where we were talking about a financial report, we had been doing this monthly report in place of that. I just want to make sure we're delivering what you want, and we just, an opportunity to check in with you on this. We'll keep doing the monthly financial report.
Silence has spoken.
Are we getting a monthly financial report now, or?
Yes.
This is just for us to talk about a lot of money?
You're getting one.
Okay.
We're still getting the same presentation that you're used to seeing, nothing different, but it's just again, at this point in the evening, wanting to bring it to you, you know, with the comment being made, you know, possibly wanting to change it up, or, so we just want to give you an opportunity to talk about it.
Give us the context around that conversation.
So it was the work, remember, so it was the work plan, and then there was, it referenced two financial reports per year. But what we have been doing in place, and we've been, as Jennifer said, fifteen, eighteen months now, whatever it is, we actually were doing monthly financial reports, now usually Jennifer's at the end of the meeting, because by the time we get to that, right, and so. And we can certainly talk about movement and head around and those types of things, but it's basically all the same detail, unless there's something you would like to see that we're not currently providing, so that's why we wanted to check in with you, and obviously, we've gone through a lot, the finance department has gone through a lot of transition and got us caught up to speed, so we're in a lot better place now than we were fifteen months ago. If you don't want a monthly financial report, and we prefer it to be quarterly or something, we can certainly do that too, but we wanted to check in with you on it.
What, what are your thoughts on, on the monthly?
I guess my, my question is, do we need monthly report? We need, obviously, we need, we need reports, but does it need to be monthly, that, that's just my question.
Or even presented, could it just be delivered to us on monthly basis?
We can do that, the only challenge with doing that, if we just email you the monthly financial report, the public's not gonna have a chance to review that, right, unless they happen now on five, but that's the only downside.
Posted on the.
Yeah, yeah, that's the, that's the, that's the wish of council to, to post that monthly and then present quarterly.
Yeah.
But again, as, as the city manager had already highlighted, we just wanted to make sure from a deliverable, that we're delivering what you all are looking to see. So it's just an opportunity for us as a department to just sharpen our pencil, to see, okay, if what we're presenting is what this council is really looking for us to present.
Look, y'all, y'all, y'all just took your, your. You turned yourself, you took yourself to a new level, right, at the last meeting, alright? So, we trust you in between the quarter of the report, but I think if we could do it electronically and, and, and add something on the website to remind people that it's there, because there are people that go into it, and I think it'd be beneficial, and, and it would save us those meetings that we could otherwise get what we need in a quarter. And I, I think that would work out fine. Usually it's the last report of the night, and we're at our sharpest at that point, if you haven't noticed.
No hundred grands is nothing.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, thank you. I, I, I've mentioned this to the city manager, Finch, there, there's a program, it's another issue to. Just another box or effort to click, but it's the Texas Transparency Trailblazer, and I think part of that is, is putting that online, along with other things, and trying to do this, I talked to you, Major Finch, about what can we do to implement that, because it would help us, so that might be part of it, which takes care of that. Thing, the, you know, the, the main reason why we were having to ask for monthly, really hadn't related, because we weren't getting it. And so, it's, it's still a measure of keeping it.
It's a very good point, because some, some of you may not have been here during that time period, but we don't ever want to go back to that again. Again, I, in all seriousness, our level of confidence in what y'all have done on the finance side, and it includes everybody, there's a lot of people, certainly apples part of that group, you know, to, to build confidence in us. When we weren't getting those monthly reports, it was really hurtful to us, and it went for a long period of time, so I, I think that we're at a level of confidence at quarterly report, and we can read the monthly reports as they come out, for those of us that want to, we can read them. I, I'll tell you, I'll understand half of it, and I may have to ask questions, but other than that, I, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea.
I guess at any point, between those quarterly reports, anybody can request that we need to see new report, and we have this.
Yeah, if, if there's a particular issue that needs to be addressed, certainly, we're not held to.
About us the link?
Yes, and we'll also, I'm sorry, we'll also have Open G O F, they've been working on pretty soon, so, and members of council will teach you how to use it, right, as well as the public can go in and look anytime you want.
So, and when's the implementation?
Finalizing the open budget book part of it, and we're working on building capital budgeting, and then also workforce planning component of it, but I T has set up a virtual server, so the systems can interface, talk to each other, so the real data, you know, real time is pulling in, so we're still working on all of that, so we can come back with a reali- realistic date, but it was my goal to have it definitely by October first with the new budget.
I mean, that's wonderful stuff, and, and so, speaking of wonderful stuff, and I just, just want to hear it again real quick, and city secretary, and Mr. Jackson, right, our, our audit's been done, completed, filed?
Correct, yes, and yes.
Science school?
Yes, the, the, the last, the last submission that has to happen is a part of the single audit, and that comes to us electronically through the federal clearinghouse from the auditors, so I spoke to the auditors on Monday, the deadline for that is April sixth. It has to come as an approval from the partners on this case, Mr. Pruitt approves it, then it comes into my inbox, so touched base with him yesterday, because it's in his box, he still has to do the final review, so just as an update, yes.
And I do give a big two does for that, too, because there is something actually in the legislation, or legislative section, which right now, where they're saying that if you, and it's being considered, if you don't have your audit done on time, then you're gonna go to a no new revenue automatically, automatically. And so, thank you for not, goodness, for getting us there, so we don't have to worry about anything.
So in your time here, you completed twenty twenty two, two?
Two.
Twenty twenty three?
Twenty twenty three.
And you submitted twenty twenty four on time?
Yes.
Plus completed the independent audit, and we have asset forfeiture audit.
Say it loud, so people in the back.
Plus the independent audit, and the asset forfeiture, five of them.
Yes, yes.
We've been busy, we've got a, we've been busy, and as, you know, presenting to you all at the, at the last full council meeting, we've got a great team in place, Ms. Odie, certainly, Ms. Pettis, can't, can't say enough. You know, it's, it's a lot of people that go into the process, but at the end of the day, it needs a quarterback, and so she has been that quarterback for the, the admin team, so just another opportunity to say my appreciation for her on behalf of, of the city.
And Mayor, if I just could, council, that, that is so important, having those audits done on time and, and those filed, I was just talking with the grant administrator yesterday, and you know, almost any federal grant, a lot of state grants, but almost any federal grant, the very first thing they want to know is whether or not your audit was filed on time, and if it wasn't, you're automatically disqualified. So now that we're up to date, we have about twenty million dollars in grants in the pipeline that are working that otherwise we wouldn't have qualified.
Sure being a quarterback.
Ms. Pettis.
Ms. Pettis is a quarterback. Does she have a jersey?
Actually, we did from the Biggest Loser competition, which we won, by the way.
People misunderstand what you just said. Okay.
I'm still gonna give her a quote, real quick. Okay, so the month of February, this is the fifth month of the fiscal year, so benchmark at this point in the year is forty one point seven percent, so we measure the revenue and expenses, that's the target number to, to compare it to, so we have collected, from an all funds perspective, forty two point six million. And we have collected one point three million in interest income, so overall, all funds, we've collected forty eight point seven percent of the budget. For the expenditure side, we have expended thirty point six million, and that comes to twenty nine percent of the budget at this point in the year. You can see, you know, the five year history there, and comparing, you know, how we've been doing collection and expending, how it's changed over the years, sales tax, our benchmark at this point is twenty five percent in the year, again, that's because we collect, we receive the payment two months behind, so we've only collected three months of sales tax in this fiscal year to date. So we're actually at twenty six percent, I'm pleased to say that this past month, the collections showed to be up, and we are at eight point four percent greater than we were at the same time last year, so we are trending ahead at this point.
A question?
Yes, sir.
It seemed like on the printer report that we had, there was a note that explained why it went from three thirty three to three eighteen, then twenty three and twenty four, you recall that, it's almost like a footnote?
I do not, I will pull it up to remind myself. Okay, yes, you're right, so in the previous fiscal year, there were some audited collections, which we had, they had to refund some, some payers, and so when you compare this time of year to last year, it seems we're much ahead, because they were given refunds, so if they were paying up to the level they, you know, should have been at that point in time, probably would have been about even, but because of the comparison was, they were getting refunds, and now they're paying the full amount, the variance is greater. General fund, alright, so we have collected six, sixty five percent of the budget at this point in time, seven hundred ninety six thousand, and interest income, we're still doing pretty good with the interest, even though those rates are definitely going down, but we're still doing good in terms of what we had budgeted for that. Our actual expenditures come in at thirty six percent, so we are about five percent behind that benchmark. for that. Our actual expenditures come in at thirty-six percent, so we are about five percent behind that benchmark. So showing you the table view here, again, it just breaks everything down by the particular, um, revenue categories, as you can see, again, sixty-five percent. The only area in which we are trending ahead is property tax, which is common at this time of year, as most of those collections have come in. Um, also, um, interest income is, is trending ahead from our projections, and then also charges for services, which is MS collections and memberships, and things of those nature. On the expenditure category, again, same thing, breaking everything down based on the different categories, um, the only area, um, which is trending ahead is the capital outlay, and that's because of that one-time purchase of the generator that precedes all police. So in this monthly report, um, all of the funds have been updated in terms of what that ending fund balance is from twenty-four, took the audited numbers and plugged those in, so, um, this is the most updated number based on our revised projection. Um, what we have in excess over the hundred and fifty days is about four point one million, so when we gather at the end of, um, April to start having some of those budget discussions, this will be something that we will talk about in terms of, um, uses of those funds.
Okay, so when we discussed the budget, it was at three million, so right now we're projected to be four million, is that what I'm understanding? With the reserves removed, we should be?
Right, so this is the audited, uh, fund balance from twenty-four, so this ties back to the act for. And so based on our, uh, projection, which we're projecting at this time, a loss of, um, five hundred ninety-nine thousand because of some one-time costs that we had to admit. So of course that reduces, um, what we project to end with, so when you take this twenty-one point nine million, and, and take it against what, um, the hundred and fifty days should look like, we have four point one million over and above the hundred and fifty days. It's one time, but, um, that's how much we have to work with for some one-time, it's increased. Alright, so moving on to utility funds, so we collect the seven point three million to date, so that's about thirty-two percent. Um, again, we collect one month behind, um, on utility revenue. Expenditures are six point eight million, which is thirty percent of the budget, and four point three of that is Dallas Water Utilities and the Trinity River Authority for our wastewater treatment. And there's some other fund highlights, so economic development, we've paid out to date five hundred thirty-seven thousand, um, in business incentives for the grants, and then proud to say that we paid our last payment for the field house debt this, uh, this month, so we are done with that.
Can you say that one more time?
The field house debt.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Pay.
Any other questions? I would see your wheels turn.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have council briefing to receive, uh, briefing on park security. I've got Matt Stogner and I also have Art here, so Matt, lead us off.
Yeah, good evening. Um, so we'll go through these, uh, these are our calls for service, um, dating back essentially a year to date. Um, what I want you guys to really emphasize and look at is, for the most part, extra patrols will, uh, be the highest number out of everything. So we are conducting extra patrols out there. I understand, you know, we can't be at these parks twenty-four seven, uh, but our officers do the best they can in getting out there, uh, driving through, certainly interdicting anybody who's committing a city ordinance violation for being in there, um, after hours is more than likely what, uh, these are here. Uh, so that's Alexander Park. I will tell you, we kind of took the, the major, uh, parks and, and ran the, the data on it. So you have Armstrong Park, um, using one hundred James Collins, um, obviously there's only thirteen there, but it's right behind the police department. A lot of people hang out behind the police department, so we're right there. Um, so going through these, I don't want to go too quick, I want you guys to see this information. If you have questions, please let me know, um, and I can answer them as best I can.
Welfare checks, is that with the unhoused community that sometimes is there in the park?
Yeah, so that could be a situation where you have an unhoused individual, uh, you have somebody calling nine-one-one for a mental health issue, things of that nature. Or a lost child for that matter.
And what civil stand by?
Um, that could be a child exchange, we do that a lot here at the police department, um, or for somebody to get their property. Um, it's a myriad of things. It, it's just us there, because there's no criminal offense, we're there to prevent a breach of peace. So Chris Paris Park, Harrington Park, now the good thing with Harrington Park is we have the gates, um, our officers, I believe now have the, the code to get in, um, after hours. Um, I'll tell you, um, and this is kind of jumping forward to our staffing slide. Um, Assistant Chief Tierina was working patrol one day and was trying to get down there multiple times, and each time he was called to a call for service away from it. So, and again, we'll get to that in a second, I don't want to jump too, too much into this. So Harrington Park, uh, thirty-eight extra patrols, Lakeside Park, you have a hundred and fifty-one extra patrols. So the officers know where things happen, and where things happen, officers will go and conduct extra patrols. Um, now shots fired, no injuries, so how these calls are generated, if, let's say we hear something here, and we say, hey, um, nine-one-one, I think it happened in Sonic, so they'll put it at Sonic in that address. It may not have happened there, but that's the address that dispatch will use to identify the location. So the officers will check the area, obviously, uh, the park is part of that area. We had two recent shootings with injuries, um, I can go into more detail with those.
And that's, this is over the last year?
This was the last year.
Is that, those shootings with injuries, so that includes one last week as well?
That's correct.
So we just had, so there were none up until about?
That's correct.
A week or two ago.
Absolutely. One of them, both of them started at another location and ended up at Lakeside. Um, one of them started in DeSoto, they decided that they're going to meet up at Lakeside to fight. Um, they decided to fight, their boyfriends get out, one of them shoots at the other. In fact, the third suspect gets out and shoots the main shooter in the butt, as he's trying to shoot the other guy, so we got them identified and everything's done on that. Um, Lions Park. Redbird Park.
I'm sorry, could you go with those?
Of course.
What's documented report?
Um, that could be like a C A R, Community Action Request. If they see something out there that, uh, something needs to be repaired, they'll document a report just to show that, you know, whatever needed to be repaired at that point. Uh, Redbird Park. Water View Park. And then staffing, I really want to emphasize this, um, we currently have six vacancies, uh, in our agency. Our recruiters, our background investigators, everybody in the police department is working very diligently to fill our vacancies. Now, we can, we can have zero vacancies, but we're still dealing with effective staffing. And if you see our current effective staffing shortages, we have five officers out on injuries. We have one shift with two functional police officers on it. I had a lieutenant working at B, I had an assistant chief helping, I will go and help. So, we are doing everything that we can just to go out and answer calls for service. Um, it's hard for us to do, and I don't want to say proactive stuff, but it's hard for us to get into these parks a lot, because we're constantly going from one side of the city to the other. Because obviously, the priority of calls will dictate where we go, and we are very much a call-taking agency right now, because we lack the staffing to do the different initiatives that we're trying to do. Now, we'll get there, but we just cannot do that right now with our current staffing. Yes.
Do we still have a park ranger, Parks Ranger on staff?
We do not, and I'll, and I'm going to get to that on the next slide, where our current internal vacancies are.
Yes, so another question is, are you involved in them as well too?
Who's that?
Citizens on.
Yes, we are, absolutely. Every chance that we can, um, they're a force multiplier, um, they go through the training, uh, to see, uh, things, they reported to us, and then obviously that is a call for that officer to have to go to respond to.
And it's trending back upward in terms of number of citizens involved?
It, it's slowly. Um, I will tell you, volunteerism is, is, I can see it's somewhat generational, and you see kind of a, a downtick, but we're doing everything that we can to, history repeats itself, it's going to come back up.
So it's a volunteer opportunity?
One hundred percent.
Okay.
You get a nice car that we're about to replace with even a better car to go out and patrol.
And there's training.
And there's training, of course, yes, they get trained personally.
Almost nobody gets a badge with that.
We'll give them a sticker. Um, so like I said earlier, um, a patrol lieutenant, and I'm not saying that we're too good to go out and do, do dirty work, but his job is to command that shift, not to go out and work the shift. Um, so, but obviously our responsibility is the safety of the citizens and visitors here in Duncanville, and whatever we have to do to respond to these calls, we're going to go do it. Now.
And also, Chief, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Adding on to this, but, um, it's also from the study that was done, that we actually need six more officers.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Yes, sir. So, our internal vacancies, so Alpha Days, our shifts are platoons essentially, you have Alpha and Bravo platoons, and then you have different shifts. So Alpha Days requires eight officers, we're, we're missing two. So every shift has two officers that they're down, just from the minimum staffing. Our minimum staffing, if you guys don't know, is four cops, that's it. For this size of city and how busy we are, a major incident takes them completely off the street, and we rely on Cedar Hill and DeSoto to come in and help. Now, we do the same with them, but what that does is it strains our resources, where people look at it, especially my personnel, and say, ultimately, then I can go somewhere else, work less with more other things, more benefits, and so I gotta, I gotta fight that. So Criminal Investigations Division, they have five detectives with the amount of cases that they have, so a lot of these cases get pushed back, especially the ones that have little to no leads. So they'll concentrate their efforts on the, the ones with significant leads. Narcotics, three vacancies, traffic, three vacancies, training and personnel, one vacancy. So, and the Park Ranger is vacant, and I will tell you, that would be on my priority list down here, because all of these are so vital to the operations of that department. What have we done? So if you see those vacancies, and truly, we have done everything that we can to help bridge that gap. Uh, we, our recruiters, we've increased our background investigators to where there were two, now there's nine. So what that does is now we're getting through our lists much quicker, and we're hiring people much quicker. Uh, our recruiters, we have sixteen of them now, includes our professional staff, they are hitting all of these recruiting events. We changed the method in which applicants go through the hiring process. We've trimmed every piece of fat that we can to minimize any dead area from the time they apply to the time they get hired. I met with an applicant yesterday who will start Monday, and she is a lateral officer from another location. Her, she was with several other agencies through this process, and she rejected those other agencies just because of our recruiting. She said that you guys actually recruited me to come here, and it's because of that that I rejected these other agencies. That is a huge testament to what we're trying to do in that agency. So we've leased billboards in Stevensville, College Town, that is the actual billboard that is up. Right now, it's two digital billboards, and I think it runs twenty-eight times in an hour. Um, Alex and Francisco, we're working with them to produce a recruiting video for us to put it on our website. We have done everything in my power to do my job to ensure that people are, are hired and we keep people. Here's the thing that's vital, we have to retain our current staffing. If we never retain our current staffing, we'll always be the dog chasing its tail. One hundred percent. So, that is my presentation, brought on the money, you're welcome. If I, if y'all have any questions, I'm sorry, I didn't leave time for that, maybe intentionally.
So long story short, because we're talking about security of the park, so, uh, you don't have enough officers to do a lot of increasing, that's conversation, right?
That's one hundred percent the con- conversation, and I'll tell you, one of the things that just makes sense to me, if you guys can see this, this is our reports for all of twenty twenty-four. I'll show you, this is sixty-seven, this is twenty. So where are our resources? In the corridor. You don't see a lot in the mid-city, you see a little bit here, that's some business districts, but for the most part, it's on, it's commercial properties. That's where all of our resources go. And then this is, if you put this over it, this is the reports that we've taken for the same year, and it's identical. So you guys know this, I'm a very data-driven person, when you see this and this, it tells a very vivid story of what's going on. Yes, sir.
Since, obviously, it's about a commercial district, do you see things on the cameras being a deterrent in those areas?
I think the cameras would certainly, I'll, I'll tell you this, the flock cameras and our other cameras, um, that we have has been a game changer for us. Uh, it has allowed us to be in locations where we can't physically be at. Um, one of my big goals is to start up a real-time crime center, where when I have enough people to have somebody sitting and watching these cameras twenty-four seven, so when they see something, now, there's no delay in that call for service. They then get on the radio and say, hey, we have somebody breaking into a car, X, Y, Z, and there's no ambiguity as far as the correct license plate, none of that, it is direct contact.
I don't want to get into detail on it.
Sure.
You have a certain amount of flock cameras that are wherever they are.
Right.
And then as far as the mobiles, how many of those do we have?
We have, uh, well, when you say mobile, we have Arlo cameras, so we do what we can with the money that we have. We are very resourceful with what we have. Now, it takes money for us to get really nice, set it out there, shine slides, make some alarms and all of that stuff, but we can't afford that. We use the money that we have in our budget to be able to get this information, and we're looking for ulterior methods too, whether it's grants, uh, now that the audit's done. We are doing everything that we can to find other sources of revenue to help pay for that stuff.
And knowing that their eyes can't be everywhere, we are actively working with our IT department to get park, more cameras in our parks. We have two parks currently that have camera systems, uh, and we're working actively with those, our IT department to get, expand that, uh, to our other parks as well. Right now, they're working on getting fiber to all of those major parks. It'll help us, you know, have that live data back and forth, so that we can get real-time data and see visually when it's happening, as opposed to recording it and doing it after that, and trying to go find the fact that after it already happens, so.
I, I was really surprised at the numbers in the parks, I expected them to be higher, so.
Yes, sir. Bart just, yes, my car just said something that is key though, because I know we've talked about this, putting cameras in the parks, and I think there were even some cameras in the parks. But the next thing that was missing was getting the fiber to actually operate the cameras, so we still need to do that.
Joe? Uh, Chief, uh,
Yes, sir.
Just in a nutshell, can you tell us why people are coming and why they're going, officers, that is?
So, recruiting, um, I think, I think Duncanville has a very distinct advantage over someplace. I think, I think Duncanville has a very distinct advantage over some places in, and it's because we are smaller. Everybody knows everybody, and we feed into that when we recruit. As far as leaving, hey, one hundred percent. I have six or seven officers looking now. If they leave, it's going to shut a lot of things down at the police department based on the visit pay.
Anything else? Stevenson, anything?
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Of course.
All right, well, that will close out a work session at seven oh five PM. Give you a short break, get back in there at seven. Mayor, before you leave, can you still have an executive session after?
Okay, we're going to call the regular session to order at seven fifteen PM. As usual, when we run late on our work session, I apologize, and I appreciate your patience. So we'll get going and get right into it. First item of business is to go through our invocation with Pastor Desmond L. Tolliver of Bondage Breaking Ministries. Please stand.
God bless everybody. Father, in Jesus' name, we thank you and we praise you for this council. We meet him, we pray today, God, that you will touch the mayor, touch the city officials. We pray, oh, God, that Jesus, that you would give the wisdom, guidance, and that you would take full control of this council, and, God, that you would give this city the direction, the instruction that is necessary. We give your name the praise, the glory, and the honor. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen. Amen.
Thank you. Please join us in the pledges. Okay, next order of business is reports. I will tell you about a couple of DIASD events that I went to, had the privilege of being invited to at the high school. One of them was a Champions Choice event. It was a real showcase of what our public schools here in Duncanville are doing. It was at the high school, but it included everything from elementary school kids that were, had set up booths and were so mature and adult, the way they introduced themselves to me, and others that came up, and they'd talk about their school and particular projects they were working on. And to my surprise, a young girl slapped her face and said, oh, my gosh, it's the mayor. I, I, I didn't expect that, but then she followed up by saying, we studied you in government. So I, I, I have to tell you, that was a really precious moment for me, and I will never forget it. But along with that, they, they showcased everything from their arts, culinary, welders, getting people certified as welders, so they're right out of high school if they're not going to college. They can go right onto the job and make a lot of money. And so they have so many programs like that, and they were all showcased at this event. Earlier, there was a, a, a short event that occurred in the gymnasium with, with a local news station. And for some reason, they stuck me with the basketball team. And I don't think I have a short man's complex, but when you're standing next to basketball players, there's something wrong. So I asked if I could get the two guards next to me instead of the six-eleven forward. So if you see the picture, you'll see I don't look really small because I pre-arranged the picture. But it was, it was a great event and a great example of what our school district is doing. And I'd, I'd ask you all in the future, when those events, it was very well attended. Go out and see what these kids are doing. It's, it's very exciting. Second thing was, still on the subject of DIASD, they had a five K run, annual five K run that they did from the Ben Franklin location. Different groups of, of abilities, of which I was not one. But it was a lot of, it was a fun event, very well attended. A lot of young people were involved. Families were running together, walking together, and it was an exciting morning. That was this past Saturday morning. Good event. We also last week had the benefit of having three town hall meetings headed up by interim city manager Kevin Hugman to talk about Republic Services Pilot Program for experimenting with the carts, as they call them, the roll-in, the rollout carts that you see all over in surrounding cities. It's probably something that is going to eventually be the only way that those services are provided for cities around because it's, in their minds, it's a more efficient way to, to do things. It's change. I think the public feedback was good. I, at least the one I attended, the first one of the week, everybody was calm. There were people that spoke in opposition, but they all were very respectful of the presenters, especially Mr. Hugman and the Christie, the representative from Republic. So it was worthwhile, the program starting. I don't have all the information of when it'll start, and I think I'm a part of it, by the way. But if you can go, I think you can go online and probably see on our website the information about the program. So it's a pilot program. Nothing's going to happen after this pilot program ends for quite a while. There'll be a lot of discussions. City manager will collect information. He may even touch on this a little bit later on and give you more information. But it, it was, it was really well done, and I thank, I thank interim city manager Hugman for running those events and, and giving the feedback that we got. Last thing, I was privileged, along with some council members, to go to the police awards that was held this week. And I want to congratulate Officer Ralston Marshall, who was Officer of the Year. What's amazing about that, that, what he got was Chief Stogner read off a list of things that he had accomplished during the year. And when people say to me, we don't ever see police in our neighborhood. Well, a couple of things came to mind. One, I have an office in the front of my house, and after I retired, I would be there all hours of the day. I, I do some consulting work, and I do a lot of city work. And so I'm there, and I would see an officer at nine o'clock in the morning go by, and I'd say, well, there's an officer right there. And then maybe three o'clock in the afternoon, I'd see another officer. And through the week, as I sit in my office, I regularly see officers in our neighborhood. So I think unless you have the opportunity to sit at your house, if you are home during the day, and you're watching out a window where you can see them, oftentimes I think there's confusion. They are coming by. I can tell you they're coming by. So when I hear people say they're never in our neighborhood, I believe they are. But if you want to know why you don't see them maybe as often or more often, all you'd have to do is read the report of the accomplishments of Officer Marshall, and you'll understand, they are busy. These guys are really busy taking care of us. So I just want to put that out there because it was something that, when I, when I saw the numbers, I realized we're short-staffed, and these guys are definitely working hard all hours of their shift. So when you see them, thank them for what they do. They are, they are doing a very good job for our city. And now with that, I'll go to council reports, and that would be Council, Councilman Mac Burnett. That's my sign to, I'm done, right there. Councilman Mac Burnett.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a list. So first, the first one I'm going to start off with is talking about our school zones. We had one of our school crossing guards that got hit in a school zone. He was following everything. He was trained well. But just ask people to be careful in school zones and stuff. Going back to what the mayor was saying, there is a trash meeting tomorrow night at the Senior Citizen Center. So it's the third one, if you want to find out more about the pilot program. On the eleventh is Operation Clean Duncanville, and Keep Duncanville Beautiful is having an event along with it. And then later that night's Moving the Park, and it's the movie The Six Triple Eight. It's, it's a very good movie. Then on the twelfth is the Easter egg hunt. On the nineteenth, Duncan Switch, but they're also having an outdoor recreation event at Armstrong Park. And then again, at Armstrong on the twenty-sixth, there's a concert in the park, Incognito, and then a Van Halen cover group called Inhaling. And then on the twenty-ninth of April is Lad Fest. And, and it's an opportunity to, with the Dunkinville Nature Conservancy, to just participate and learn more. And then on May second is Bloom Fest. So it's a first-time event they're trying to do. Emerald City's going to be the band there. They're an excellent band. And so it's a good event for, for our city. And, and then, and, and in the spirit of things, Jeremy, I'm going to let you know that the minnow calling contest at Lakeside Park, it's being rescheduled this Saturday due to rain. Okay, that's my April Fool's joke, sorry. Thank you.
Councilman Pennebaker.
Good evening. First, I want to mention that tonight is the first night of the Rec Center Offering Archery. And this is something that's special to me and my family. We've been a family of going to archery tournaments probably the last eight years or so. And our son graduated a couple of years ago. Our daughter dropped out of archery this past year to pursue cheerleading. But our son is actually running a portion of the program, and it's, it's a wonderful opportunity to gain skill, discipline, patience, and the community of archers, it's, it's a wonderful community to be a part of. Duncanville has the potential, and this program has the potential to actually develop an archery team. And it takes some coordination with the school district. But I would encourage people to try it out. It's Tuesday nights, six to eight, I believe. And we start getting people up there and figure out a way to work with the school district. And next thing you know, we've got an archery team competing. Next to that, after that, I just want to mention the Run for the Wall. I'll be mentioning it a lot the next couple of weeks or a couple of meetings. It's a cross-country motorcycle ride that starts in California. It ends at the Memorial Wall in Washington DC. They come through Duncanville on Sunday, May eighteenth, about seven AM. There's a partial bridge closure, and it, it's a pretty moving, extremely moving event. The highway just becomes calm and then still. And then slowly, you start seeing these motorcycles roll in. It's very moving. So I would encourage y'all to be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pennebaker. Ms. Gooden.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City of Champions. How are you? I just come on the mic just to mention to you about PIP. So Spring 2025 PIP Days. If you're interested in volunteering, those dates are Friday and Saturday, April twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, and May second and third. It's a program that I have been a part of the last couple of years. Some houses are, some residents apply to have their houses renovated in some form or fashion on the outside. And we are able to come together as a community and help those residents make repairs to their homes that they're normally not able to do for whatever different circumstances. I know our mayor and council member Mac Burnett has been participating in it for years. We have Ms. Gail Slager, who also volunteers for it. So it is really a community event where we come out and take care of one another. So if you're available on the mornings of Saturday, April twenty-fifth and April twenty-sixth, also the next weekend of May second and May third, PIP Spring 2025, and there will also be the same program happen again in the fall of this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pennebaker, okay, you got it. All right, then we move on to one C, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. First thing I'd like to share with you is the City of Duncanville was recognized by the Chamber of Commerce just last week as the Business of the Month. So they gave us a nice little plaque, and we've got it here. And I'll certainly let you guys take a look at that, but we certainly appreciate them recognizing the city as the Business of the Month. It was mentioned about tomorrow night's meeting at the Senior Center at six thirty for the totes. That's the trash carts. Those are districts one, three, and five, the pilot program that is kicking off. And interim assistant city manager Kevin Hugman tells me that the totes are being delivered this week to those participants. So if you live in District one, three, or five in one of those neighborhoods, you should have already received a letter. You should have received information. But more than likely, one day when you come home this week, there's going to be a tote there for you, both a trash and a recycling tote. So those are being delivered this week. Oh, yes, it's certainly open. And it is no April Fool's joke, but for the second time in his career, interim assistant city manager Kevin Hugman is retiring from us, and it involves a camper for the second time in his career. And I think, I just want to thank Kevin for all of his support these last few months. He'll be wrapping up with us at the end of this month. And it's fitting to announce this on April Fool's Day, but it's no joke. But seriously, thank you for everything you've done, and really appreciate everything and your support and coming back and helping me as we work through these transitions. Thank you, Mayor.
I too echo those sentiments. You've been an amazing help in bringing back, as the city manager described when he first brought you back on board, to bring back some organizational stability, and thank you for, for that. Move on to, no proclamations or presentations this evening. Move on to citizens' input. Just remember, we have no electronic input today. We do have, looks like, three requests for to speak before us tonight. So just remember, we've got two minutes. As you approach, give your name and your address. First speaker is Diane Zilka.
I'm Diane Zilka, live at thirteen nineteen Green Tree Lane. I came to talk about chickens. I have lived in the city for about twenty years. For about twelve of those, I've kept and raised chickens. I have a large flock, between twelve and eighteen chicken. During that time, I have never had a single nuisance call from anyone. We, me and my chickens don't bother anyone. But this new proposed rule is going to mess up my entire system, right? In my backyard, I have a syst, I have an ecosystem, involves chickens, a garden, and compost. It's an interdependent system so that each of those parts depends on the other two. If you limit the number of chickens I can have, it will destroy my whole ecosystem. I've worked really hard on it for over a decade. I have gotten to the point where it's basically self-funded, but it will no longer be that if you limit my number of chickens. I, it's somewhat galling to me that I need to now have a permit and be inspected and all of that stuff by people who I believe know less about chickens than I do. But I would be willing to, to submit to all of that, except for the fact that it destroys my ecosystem, right? There's no real reason for that, since I have never cost the City of Duncanville a single penny with my chickens. It's, it seems overreaching and unfair to me. And that's all I want to say. I tried to give feedback, by the way. I tried very hard to give alternative rules that would not be punitive, but would still resolve the nuisance problem that apparently there's a whole chicken gang around town that I was unaware of. And those are just being completely ignored. So now I'm just asking for an exemption. Just grandfather me in.
Thank you. Pardon me if I don't pronounce this right. Is Omari Wright? Did I get that right? No pun intended. Yes, sir.
I don't need a mic, but I'm going to use it anyway. I'm going to kind of stand back. I'm kind of loud from New York. How you doing? I've, I've kind of spoke to everyone here. Omari Wright, business on seven oh three Big Stone Gap Road. I haven't formally met you, Mayor. How you doing? How you doing, everyone? I'm here, I didn't intend on speaking, but I had the opportunity. So I said, hey, let me just come up here and kind of talk. I have some meetings with people, some of the council members and stuff coming on this week. I'm here to talk about just the trade school. I'm trying to open up in Duncanville. Well, let me rephrase that. I'm opening up. I want the city to be a part of it. It's going to be open. It's going to happen. We have the building. We're just going to be looking for assistance and stuff. Just off the reports, Duncanville only has two percent, off the economic development report, two percent of people in Duncanville. in Duncanville are doing construction. So our target is at-risk youth and problematic. We say probably, like myself, I was problematic. Problematic people, 18 and above. Want to train them in the construction field and get them out to work. I myself was assistant superintendent. I built several of the schools out here in Dallas. So I'm well aware of a lot of things that's missing as far as the trades. We've hired contractors and literally they're figuring out what to do on the job. It's not a lot of training going on. And we're missing a lot of economics that could be brought back into Duncanville by having our youth 18 and up, that's everybody forgets about, trained. And I'm in touch with construction companies. I'm doing a whole lot on my end. Probation officers, trying to give alternate to going to jail, trying to hurry up time, and give a whole lot of spills. But everyone's going to really get a formal letter from me. I've just been kind of hitting you up and just giving like, hey, come on down and check us out where we're at. I want to invite everybody to come on down to 703 Big Stone Gap Road, where you can see what we're trying to do there and what we are doing. And we want to be a part of the city because we want to help the economics of it, which is, it'll be a big economic boost for the city, as well as PIP. And part of my program, we're going to go out and I'm teaching them in the field. And I want to know target areas we can work on. Like I said, I'm a contractor. I can build a house from the ground up. And I'm an artist, so I get real creative. So it's a lot of things that benefits to have in the school. Four, three, two, one, that I want to thank you, everybody. Just giving a, hey, how you doing? I'm here, not going nowhere.
Thank you. Susan Davis.
Susan Davis at 119 Forest Court in Duncanville. Good evening, council members. I'm here to express continued concerns about the proposed revisions to Article 2 Animal Control. While this revision was reframed as addressing concerns with the previous version, it still includes burdensome and excessive provisions that directly impact responsible residents, particularly those who keep backyard hens to support their families. First, the ordinance still grants sweeping authority to the local animal authority. Officials can conduct inspections at their discretion, revoke permits based solely on complaints, and seize animals, all with limited oversight or clear standards. This concentration of power leaves residents vulnerable to inconsistent or even arbitrary enforcement. Second, the ordinance imposes an annual permit requirement with excessive red tape, coop plans, site drawings, notarized permissions, and inspections. But the ongoing cost of compliance is even more troubling. Families must meet strict setback distances up to 80 feet and provide four square feet of coop space per bird. Bedding must be changed at least every 48 hours. That's two days, which on average costs around $20 to $25 a week. That's over $1,000 a year just in bedding. This is a hardship for some of our citizens. The ordinance also mandates wing clipping, regardless of whether birds are securely enclosed, which adds more labor stress and potentially vet costs. Plus, there's no allowance for other food birds, like quail or ducks. At a time of rising food prices and growing interest in self-sufficiency, these rules create unnecessary burdens for residents trying to feed their families. As a reminder, other cities like Houston, San Antonio, and El Paso regulate hens effectively without permits, relying instead on nuisance laws. We really do respectfully urge the council to eliminate the permit requirement, remove excessive maintenance mandates, and revise enforcement authorities to better reflect community values. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item 4, Consent Agenda. Comments or motions on that?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent agenda by Councilwoman Mac Burnett, second by Councilwoman Gooden. Please vote. Thank you. Now moving to item 5. Item for individual consideration. There was no action to take on item A as a result of executive session. We did have a second executive session that we're moving to the end of the meeting. So immediately following this regular session, we'll move into executive session to complete that part of our business. Item 5B, DCEDC Design Incentive Grant, Duncanville Eats. Marcella Perez, Economic Development Coordinator.
Manager, Mayor, and Council. I come for you tonight to present on Duncanville Eats, their request for signage. Duncanville Eats seeks to help food businesses who do not have a brick and mortar location with food business infrastructure and business management training. Their current permitted business type is a commercial kitchen that supports the food businesses, such as local chefs, caterers, cooks that cook from home, and food prep. Their goal is to operate as a commissary kitchen and service food trucks. However, once they have a larger grease trap and additional hand sinks, they will be able to move forward as such. And this will also require applying for a new CO. They are, they presented a grant request to the DCEDC for $4,330 for exterior signage at 700 South Cochran Hill Road, Suite 158. And this grant was presented to the DCEDC on March 24th, 2025, and the board voted to approve unanimously. And these are some photos currently of the facility that show their equipment, prep space, prep areas, and just some additional imagery. The signage on the left is what was there now from a previous business. And they are requesting assistance again so that the community will know who they are, where they are. And the picture on the right will depict the signage that they hope to install.
I had two questions. You answered one. The question that I do have is, are you aware of whether or not the, this sign, this sign application has gone before the Building Inspection Department for approval?
It doesn't require. We do check the code, the ordinance, and check the measurements based on what's provided in the bids to us. And as long as it meets the requirements, then we move forward. But they, one, so when the business owner goes to install, they are required to request a permit from the city at that time. So it is reviewed at that time.
Okay, but at this point, and I understand what you're saying. It's probably going to work out. But at this point, we don't know that the sign that is on this invoice will qualify by the rules for placing a sign.
Based on the dimensions that were provided in the application, in one of the bids, the bid that they hope to go with, it does meet the ordinance, the measurements for the ordinance.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion approved by Councilman Mac Burnett, second by Councilwoman Cherry. Please vote. Thank you.
And owner Cindy Johnson was here tonight to represent the business.
I wish we would have known sooner.
Sorry, apologize for not introducing her earlier.
All right, thank you. Good luck. Okay. Item 5C, Amendment to Incentive Agreement with Delani Investments LLC. Who do we have? Oh, you're back. Thank you.
Yes, thank you again. So as we discussed in the last meeting during the Economic Development Quarterly Report, we were seeking to address all of the outstanding grants that we had from previous years. And there were outstanding grant monies not yet reimbursed specifically. So we had sent out letters to these business owners to let them know that, to kind of get an update and let them know that we were looking to clarify what the status was and that we were wanting to move forward. Mr. Delani immediately contacted the office and expressed his interest in continuing with his project and would really like to see it through to completion. He did come forward with a second extension request for the completion of the paving and landscaping grants that he received. The address, which I apologize is not listed on here, is 511 East Camp Wisdom Road. It's roughly one block east of Oriole Boulevard. And aside from the grant awards, Mr. Delani has invested a significant amount of money in this property already to improve the facade, a complete remodel, including new framing and roofing. His original award was $208,610.97, which was approved by council on September 13th, 2023. He just experienced some setbacks and some delays. And again, just the timing, since he was awarded landscaping, landscaping can only be done at a certain time of the year so that whatever he plans doesn't die. So he came before us again, as mentioned, to request that second extension. He was already reimbursed $40,000 for the paint portion of his grant, and that was awarded last August, which is, leaves a remaining balance of $168,610.97. And the amended incentive agreement with a project's completion and reimbursement deadline of 90 days post-city council approval was approved by the DCEDC on their regular meeting, March 24th, 2025.
Counsel, any questions? Are there any photos included in the, in your presentation?
No, we were working with the applicant to get some updated photos, but we didn't have time to get any.
Yeah, I believe this was a property that in the last maybe five or six years has done a renovation of some sort outside. They did a overhead facade construction. So they've already done quite a few improvements to the property.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and it's, it looks a lot better than it has in a long time.
Yes, it completely changed the color of the paint, redid the roof, took off the old style, and just completely redid the entire thing. So it looks very much different today.
Okay, counsel, anybody?
Make the motion to approve.
There we go. Councilwoman Mac Burnett, motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Pennebaker. Please vote. And one thing after the fact, remind me again, how long will this extension be for?
So he will be given 90 days from today's date.
To begin?
To complete. He already has the contractors in place, so he's ready to go as soon as he gets the approval.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So we move to, okay, item 6A, presentation from the Duncanville Police Department. And I have on here Officer Wilcott. Who's going to be doing the presentation? Oh, he's here. I think I just demoted you. Assistant Chief Wilcott.
Can y'all hear me? All right, there we go. So I'm here to brief you all on some of the changes that you wanted to the animal ordinance. And just a brief history. So I came before you, me and ACO Chamberlain, September 17th, December 3rd, December 17th, then again, January 23rd for a workshop. Now, the item in question, the ordinance, was the subject of a discussion during a workshop with the city council on Wednesday, on January 23rd, 2025, where several changes were proposed. City council members requested the removal of or addition of specific definitions, a clarification of the Board of Adjustments, renaming the local health authority to differentiate from similar entities in other ordinances, and requested that the term "special use permit" be revised. Additionally, they recommended adjustments to the file chart to allow for an increased number of file per quarter acre. Requested grammatical revisions and sought a more detailed description of the process when an animal is deemed a nuisance. However, the city council did not support measures that would limit or ban roosters, impose permit fees, enforce six-foot fence requirements for file owners, or allocate costs for educational materials or courses on responsible file ownership. In the weeks following the workshop, I, Assistant Chief Wilcott, convened discussions with community members, the city attorney, the municipal judge, to address the proposed changes to the ordinance. Furthermore, I reached out to the Texas Department of Agriculture to gain a better understanding of any relevant state statutes that I may need to know about. Most of the requested changes were made after council with the city attorney and guidance from the municipal judge. Now you'll see before you, you have a little tablet that I created. So what I did was, I took the clean version, the new revised version that was provided by Attorney Hager. And I want to commend them. I think they did a pretty good job on the ordinance and getting it to me. I put that in there. And if you look at the front of it, it's like a guide. There's a list of some of the changes that you requested. So say on Section 410, it says definitions. And then it says added or altered definitions. So if you turn to page one, then you will find that. Okay? I wanted to provide that to you. I figured it'd be a little bit easier for you all to take that with you, for you all to take that with you and go through it at your convenience. And you can mark it up, make notes on it, you know, whatever you need to do. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Chad, who's going to go through some slides. He's going to give you a high-level view of some of the changes that were made. He's not going to go over all the changes, stuff like grammatical errors, or if y'all felt the sentence just didn't read right or something like that. But he's going to speak on the ones that are a little bit more important to y'all. Okay? And then we'll take questions after that.
Good evening, counsel, mayor. So to kind of circle back on what Assistant Chief Wilcott was saying, we have compiled a PowerPoint presentation that basically highlights the, if you recall, the workshop that we had on January 23rd, the changes that we all discussed. So we have highlighted that in a PowerPoint. Originally, we had the Board of Adjustments. We have since changed that to the Animal Appeals Board. We have also included in the chicken run to be included, as well as in the definition, as exercise yard. We originally, if you recall, the file chart that we have, we had the wording under residential dwelling, I believe it was. We have changed that to inhabited dwelling and clearly defined that. There was a little bit of confusion, confusing wording on the local health authority as it pertains to other city positions. We had changed that to the local animal authority. On our animal nuisance part, we had a question or concern about how we would make determination and how an owner would abate the determination. So we had gone back and clearly defined how that will happen and how an owner can appeal that with the courts. And this slide here, it is a continuance of that as well. On section 420A, like Assistant Chief Wilcott said, we have removed the ban or limit on roosters. The chart has been updated to allow for increased number of fowl, as well as the inhabited dwellings changed. We have removed any fowl permit fees, removed the enforcement of a six-foot fence. And I believe we added, back in January, we did not have whether the site drawing would need to be professionally engineered. We had added that it does not have to be, it can just be a written site plan, site drawing. And we also removed any cost for educational material for fowl owners as well.
Counselwoman Gooden?
Thank you, mayor. So I recall asking in January, and I didn't go back and re-watch the video, so forgive me, but I recall asking about what is driving this concern? What is it that we're intending to address with the new ordinance? If that could be explained, and then also a question came up about changing the bedding every 48 hours and the expense that that would be on the owners of the chickens? If we could just start there.
Okay, so I'll let him address the bedding. That's not my thing. As previously explained, it's the call volume. It's the call volumes regarding the chickens and the roosters. And there are a lot of chickens and roosters in Duncanville, and Duncanville is a small community. And there are a lot of responsible people who own chickens that take care of them, keep them clean, don't let them get out. But with that, there are a lot of people in Duncanville that are not responsible. And at some point, we need to try to set some type of limit and have a control on things as far as, you know, the amount of chickens coming into the city and the amount of roosters coming into the city. It's about a quality of life thing. Sometimes people aren't happy and they just don't say anything, you know? Some people will, you know, but there are a lot of people that don't want to live next door to people who have roosters that wake them up early in the morning, but they're afraid to come and say anything, so.
Okay, you said call volume. And I think I also asked, what are the calls that are coming in regarding chickens? And what were the violations that we're trying to address in that high call volume? Is it, is it a breakdown of the type of calls that we're receiving?
There's a high call volume, I don't have a breakdown of the calls. Like I said before, the calls can be for anything. They can be for noise, they can be, my neighbor's chickens are out. They could be, there's chickens in the road. It could be any, anything. When she did, when she created the search to put the numbers together, she did it with the words fowl, chickens, hens, and roosters. So that's where she got the number of calls that involve one of those items. So the calls could be for anything.
Okay. And here's my concern with that. I understand we have high call volume. But if I don't understand the violation that we are intending to address, I don't know what this impact will have on those who are not having those issues. So as the at-large, I don't just have one particular district that I have to consider, I have to consider the entire city. And I've received calls, text messages, and emails regarding the impact this would have. And so trying to address the issue is what I think you're wanting us to do. But if we don't know what the majority of the calls are, if it is chickens at large, then let's create an ordinance or a change that addresses that. Or if it is roosters, what do they call, what do they do, rooster?
Crow.
Crow. Then let's create something that addresses that. So we're not just shooting blindly out here, we're really making a change for the concern at hand. That's just my input, but you were going to answer the other question.
So on the bedding, it does state once every 48 hours. But it also, at the very beginning of that, it says soiled material or bedding. So it's more of, you know, it's a sanitation thing. So if it's not soiled, it wouldn't be expected to be cleaned every, once every 48 hours. But, you know, it's kind of, I think as a responsible chicken owner, they would know, you know, when to clean it. But yeah, it does state soiled on there.
It does state soil. Okay, thank you. That's what I have for now.
So it sounds to me like on that particular issue, there would be, well, one, it's a judgment call initially by the owner as to whether or not that needs to be changed. And you would only be involved if there was a complaint that there was a smell coming from it. Is that right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And the second question, there's a couple other lights on. The second question I have is, the process, I saw in your slideshow that you have officially named the Board of Appeals for anything within this ordinance. What do you call in that? It was on one of your slides.
It was the, we changed it to the Animal Appeals Board.
Okay, the Animal Appeal Board. So anybody that had, was looking for an exception could go to the Animal Appeals Board and talk to them?
Correct.
Over whatever it is. I'm not just talking with chickens, it could be dogs, cats, chickens. But they can go to that board, go before that board as an process of appeal. Doesn't guarantee they're going to get the favorable decision, but it's set up that way, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Chief Stogner, you want to add something?
Yeah, no, no, they're fine. So ultimately, under any direction from the health authority, which would be me, if I deny a permit, that person has the right to appeal it. Ultimately, how it's currently written, it's appealed to a board, which includes me, who initially rejected it, and the fire chief, and I believe the city manager. So when we initially did this with the goat several years ago, or last year, that was, that kind of pushed us to change and revise this ordinance to best practices, legislative changes, things of that nature. So they changed it. So they do have the right to appeal a decision based off what I say yes or no, approve or deny it. After, after the board hears it, it then currently comes to you all to hear the argument essentially, to make a decision whether you uphold my denial or approve it. So that's what we're changing to where it now would, upon y'all's approval, go to the board and stay away from the council.
Did we remember it's coming back to us? Okay, yeah, oh no, I remember Sophie's Choice. It was a terrible thing. But I thought we were getting away from.
Well, the way it's set up, you didn't want to hear animal appeals. It's not really appropriate for you since you passed the ordinance. So we set up the appeal board, set standards, and so they get to hear the permit to make sure that the police chief's not being arbitrary and capricious, that he based it on health, size, number. I mean, you have, I know we're talking about chickens, but we have limits on other animals.
Okay.
You can only have so many dogs, you can only have so many cats, you can only have so many miniature donkeys or whatever else we allow.
My question was just to make sure that, now I'm understanding that the way this is written, it will come back to us if it's appealed?
No, it would, it would remove y'all from that decision-making. And I'll tell you, we're not concerned with the responsible animal owner. What we're concerned with are those that are irresponsible of their neighbors. And understand that we're an urban city, it's, there's not a lot of room between houses. And we feel that it's appropriate as a neighbor to be a good neighbor. Now, if they're not, how can we regulate that? And that's what we're bringing to you guys.
Perfect, thank you. Mr. Pennebaker?
I'm going to try to drill down into Counselwoman Gooden's question here a little bit and put ACO Chamberlain on the spot here. So you're the guy going out on all the chicken calls. Do you have a best guess what those, what those are percentage-wise? Roosters?
Yeah, it's a lot of rooster calls. It's a noise, noise complaint.
More than half, maybe?
More than half.
For roosters?
Yeah.
And if we eliminated half of the roosters, we eliminate at least half the problem from your perspective?
Essentially, yeah.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, just a reminder, we, we as a council agreed to remove or to ask you to remove the fence requirement, the six-foot fence requirement, which had been removed, and also to remove the fee, any permit fee. So essentially, it just leaves the permit is solely so you have a database of people that you know have animals. Is that correct?
That's correct.
No other, it doesn't kick in annual inspections or anything, it's just strictly a database right now? Okay, thank you. Mr. Coons?
Thank you, mayor. So just another follow-up with the question about, or just a comment about the roosters, and I made this point during our workshop, is we do have a noise ordinance. And so I guess, wouldn't the concerns about the noise with the roosters be covered with the noise ordinance? And so that's, that's just one comment that I'm making there. And then what's presented to us right now, does it allow for fowl outside of chickens? So hens, or ducks, or geese, or any other kind of winged, feathered creatures? Was that, are they allowed under what's being proposed to us now?
The only thing that was put in the ordinance was backyard fowl, and I think he, chickens. So.
No comments?
So just chickens then, based on what's presented to us? My, there are. So, and then, so we are, what's presented does still require a permit fee, that's still in there?
Permit fee? No, no, sir.
No fee for the permit?
No.
Okay.
Remember in the workshop, that was something that you didn't want in the workshop.
Okay, you still got to get a permit, just no fee?
Yes, and you didn't want to ban roosters. And we spoke about that and how they were the majority of the problem. But the council did not want to ban roosters. And I have to say, you know, I've spoken to a couple of citizens and they're responsible chicken owners, but they were really okay with banning roosters. And if you recall, the gentleman that came up and spoke to y'all about his little daughter that had the three chickens, he spoke to me after the workshop, he only has two now because one turned out to be a rooster and got really aggressive with him. So he had to get rid of him. So, which we explained in the workshop that roosters are a big problem.
And then, and, you know, I just want to say, I do really appreciate what y'all, and I appreciate your patience because, again, it's the fifth or sixth time that you've had to present this to us. I hope we have an opportunity for us just to make a decision on it, so you can, then, I know whatever we decide, then you're just going to get to work on enforcing whatever we decide. And so, again, I appreciate your patience with us and working with us. And I know I asked this before, so anything that's happening in a backyard, so we mentioned the bedding, number of fowl, chickens, whatever's going back there, the structure, if that meets the code. So right now, would you all have, would you have to get a warrant to go into someone's backyard and to check and see if they're changing the bedding often enough? And if the structure's sound and the number, if you have to go back and count? I mean, what would, you know, under what circumstances would you go into someone's yard and look and see if they're in compliance?
Yeah, so typically, the way it works is if I get a complaint, like mayor was saying, a smell on the bedding, I would go to the owner's house and, you know, talk to him about the complaint that was received. I can say nine times out of 10, they'll say, come on in, come look at it, you know? So we really don't run into that issue very often. I personally have never had to get a warrant to enter a backyard. But to answer your question, no, we can't just enter it just based on a complaint. But I would go knock on the door and, you know, try to talk to them and educate them that way.
Thank you. And again, I really appreciate y'all. And again, I'm kind of in agreement with some statements that are already made, is that there are some nuisance issues. But at the same time, you know, again, my concern is also that we would make things difficult on those who are already doing things right and probably could teach us a thing or two, so thank you.
Counselwoman Pennebaker?
I just want to ask about the noise ordinance. How enforceable would that be with a rooster? I mean, you're going to get a call theoretically, crackadon, over the weekends. Can you see that being an easy thing to enforce as far as a noise ordinance on a rooster?
Okay, so, yes, it can be, it can be enforceable, but here's the thing. It all depends on the situation. You know, if someone calls about a loud barking dog at night, you know, the officers are going to go out. If it's daytime, or if he's around, he's going to go out and he'll deal with it accordingly. You know, it's, the roosters can be just as much of a nuisance as a dog. So yes, we're able to deal with the animals, you know, but every situation is different. So you just want to be in position to handle things the best you can, the right way, and avoid some situations if you can. And with the right ordinance, you can avoid some situations.
Right. And do you think we need a rooster survey? Just kidding.
April Fools.
You have to follow it up with April Fools.
Yeah, I think one of the things they're faced with, and it's true with barking dogs too, rest assured, as soon as they get out there, the rooster will stop crowing. And until you have an officer or the animal control officer can actually witness and make testimony to the fact that that rooster was crowing at a particular time, and I think you probably need a couple of those before you could, but by not having roosters allowed, you've eliminated that problem, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions, anybody you have? City manager, explain to us where we go from here on this item.
Oh, I don't know if we have enough time, mayor. So basically, what we're, what we're doing at this point, if there's any additional direction that you would like to provide to the police department or the attorney, and then we will bring this ordinance back to you for a vote in the near future. I'm going to say near future because we don't know the exact date yet, but in the near future for your consideration.
Okay, on that note, what route would you suggest that a councilperson report this? Any concerns or changes or?
If I may, mayor, to be honest, we've changed the entire ordinance.
Yes, sir.
And we have denied ourselves the ability to streamline our animal control ordinance because we've been holding this thing because of the chickens. If you still want to contemplate the chicken portion, the chicken portion, that's one section of this entire ordinance. And so, if you still want to work on chicken-related issues or fowl issues, I would advise you to go ahead and pass the ordinance, sans, which means without, the chicken portion, so you can work on it more, so that we can implement the rest of the ordinance instead of holding up the whole animal control ordinance over roosters, or bedding, or permits, or... Now, I will tell you that since I have started this journey, I have found out more about bird flu and urban chickens than I ever thought. When I left West Virginia, I would never see them again, except for on my plate. So, having said that, one of the things that we've done, so you know, is we've consulted with A&amp;M through their standards on urban poultry raising. And so, when, and I understand the citizens here that have chickens and have been responsible in raising those chickens, so maybe there can be a balance struck. But I have to write a regulation. They have to do the study. If everybody in town had chickens, we would have a problem. And we pass this ordinance, everybody in town can have chickens. And so, you have to understand, we have to get a balance. And in getting that balance, you know, someone gets a ticket that maybe doesn't want a ticket, or I have to write the regulations that serve the greater good. So, in that, there may be incidences where we gather someone we don't want to in the net. You know, when you go tuna fishing, you end up with a lot of things in your net besides tunas. So, if, if there needs to be work to accommodate some citizens, that's fine. But we, we don't have anything really on the books that I think is really legitimately enforceable. And we cannot not do anything, which is a double negative. But, so, if there's more work that needs to be done on the fowl, so be it. If not, then we'll bring back the whole thing. But I hate to see us not get some of these other things cleaned up with regard to dogs and cats and appeals and nuisance animals, because we've been holding up things that you have never mentioned one thing about, and dogs and cats and dangerous dogs and those kinds of things, which are probably more of a problem than chickens. But...
City Attorney, I appreciate the explanation, and I think it's not addressing what I'm asking, because the way this is posed on the agenda, it's not up for vote. It's a presentation. And the city manager just explained where we go from here. I will tell you, I've been here from day one with this, before Chief, Assistant Chief Wilcox took it over. I'm, at the least, I'm one of the most, I'm the most encouraged to try to get this over with, because I've seen how long it's taken. And in part, it's been a previous council and now this council that hasn't really taken it to where it needed to go. And we're here. We're here tonight, and this is what we talked about. So, in my opinion, I thought this was going to be the last step. But in my reading of this presentation, and with the explanation of the city manager, it's still out there. But unless somebody wants to do something additional, I suggest that they bring it back now for approval.
Adoption, yeah. And we wanted one more trying, because things have changed. Basically, you know, things are different with chickens, and there's been this bird flu scare, and I've, actually, my hometown in Michigan, they had an outbreak of bird flu in backyard chickens. And so, and I read about that. If anyone wants to go, it's in Lansing, you can read it. But, you know, all those things have concern. And it has concern for the owners, because they don't want their birds to get bird flu. And it scares other people. So, then, here we are again, and we wanted to bring it to you just one more time. If there's a small tweak that needs to be made, we'd rather make it than bring it back just so it can be passed, so.
Okay, and I, there's two more questions out there that I'll get to in a second. I just want to be clear that tonight, the presentation is complete. They came back, have confirmed all the changes that we discussed previously. And what we need to do next is get this on an agenda to vote on. So, with that, Councilwoman McBurnett, I think you're the one first.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to thank you guys for the work that you've put in this stuff, too. I think the city attorney gave us his sage advice, and it looks like there's just one area we need to work on a little further. And I'd suggest the two audience members be a part of that group. Thanks.
Okay. Councilwoman Gooden?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you both for bringing it back to us and being willing to do the report for the one millionth time. I do agree with the attorney that we go ahead and vote on one portion of it, and then the file, file portion, we continue to have conversation about it. There are some invitations that I've had to go and look at a few throughout the city and have some conversations with the residents and citizens to hear their side, looking at the new proposed red line, then discussing how that impacts them and their systems that they have in place. So, with that, I would agree that we move forward with approving possibly the dog at large and all the other issues that it addressed, but the chicken and the file.
The fowl section, excuse me for interrupting, is twenty A, four dash twenty A.
Four dash twenty A, so discuss that separately.
So, that's the only thing that needs to be pulled out.
Yeah.
The way, the way we've, because we did reorganize it for you, so that's the only thing that we did there. So, if you want us to bring it back, you know what? We'll bring it back. If you want to pull out twenty A, make a motion to approve it without twenty A, if that's, and you can get four votes, and then we'll bring that back after we do whatever it is you tell us.
Thank you.
This is the consensus tonight, but I think it's already been addressed by the comments that we've received, that we're taking it as is. And anything that wants to happen after the fact can be discussed with, you know...
We'll, we'll bring it back as is, and if you decide you want to pull out forty twenty A, and your colleagues can get four votes, we'll pull it out and pass it and then bring it back.
That would be my suggestion right now. And, you know, somebody has other suggestions. There's a place, a time and place to do that, but I think we need to, just me, I think we need to push forward and get this thing done. So, all right.
Question?
Yes.
Have you got a vote?
Your mic.
I'm sorry.
So, okay.
Voting, yeah, there's no action tonight. We're...
Okay.
Back.
What? I'm almost, you said that at the workshop.
I was happy, I was smiling at the workshop.
All right, thank you all. Okay, with that, we're going to recess our, our meeting at eight twenty-two PM and move into executive session.
And then?
We're on the air, right?
Yes, we're on the air.
So, as a result, well, we adjourned our executive session at...
Eight forty-seven.
Eight forty-seven PM. We reopened our regular session at...
Eight forty-seven.
Eight forty-seven PM. And with that, there was a motion.
Okay, I understand that there was a problem with the video. So, as a result of the executive session, I would ask that the council consider a motion to terminate the contract between the city and the Jespersons regarding three oh two North Main Street, and terminate that agreement and return the earnest money in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars.
Yes. And with that, I had a motion to approve that was Councilwoman McBurnett, second by Councilwoman Pennebaker, and the vote was unanimous.
Yes.
So, we are again, unanimous in favor of terminating the agreement.
Correct, and, and return of the earnest money. And there was no further action as a result of either executive session, and you may adjourn.
Period. Adjourned at eight fifty-one PM.